All right. Good evening. This work session of the ISD 279 School Board is being held in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center on Tuesday, March 11, 2025. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session is ended. With regard to the audio recording, our communications staff has asked that we share a friendly reminder that side conversations during the work session are picked up by the recorder and can affect sound quality. Also, conversations during transitions between agenda items are on the recording as well. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names, starting with the person to the left.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
Kelsey Dawson, school board member.
Amy Moore, general counsel.
Kim Heil, superintendent.
Brian Bassett, superintendent.
Keith Tate, school board member.
Erica Pastor, school board member.
Tanya Prince, school board member.
And I, Thomas Brooks, school board member and president. The purpose of the school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork to change information, and when applicable, to provide direction and order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. Dr. Heil, would you please share your change?
Thank you. I thank you Vice Chair Brooks and Chair Prince and members of the board and community members. Our first item for this evening's work session is the LGBTQIA+ History and Cultural Resolution, with a specific focus on the Pride Month Advisory Lesson. We are seeking board guidance on its implementation, as the lesson is scheduled for release on April 1st and will be taught during the week of May 13th. Given recent executive orders, we ask the board's consideration and direction regarding the Pride Month Advisory Lesson. So to provide us with context this evening, we have General Counsel Amy Moore with us, and she will first present an overview of the relevant executive orders and legal landscape. Amy?
Thank you. Good evening. So as Dr. Heil said, discussion for the board tonight surrounds the board's LGBTQIA+ History and Culture Resolution, specifically paragraphs 1 and 7, directing the administration to develop and teach curriculum, which has taken the form of the advisory lesson. The reason we're discussing it tonight is for me to provide you an understanding of executive order, in particular 14190, and its potential impact on that advisory lesson. In part, the executive order states that schools may have funding eliminated if it's determined that there is instruction that advances or promotes what the executive order terms gender ideology. Without a definition in that executive order of what it terms gender ideology, in reviewing portions related to gender, there is reference to what's called social transition, which they define as the process of adopting a gender identity or gender marker that differs from a person's sex, which includes using preferred names and pronouns. Important with this and other executive orders is the penultimate sentence, which states that "this order shall be implemented consistent with applicable law and subject to availability of appropriations," which means it must be consistent with applicable law. So I'll talk first a bit about federal funding, executive orders, and what that means, federal law, and the current status of state law. So first, in regard to our federal funds, our overall federal funding makes up about 10% of our general fund, Fund I budget. This primarily comes from grants for the various titles, Titles 1 through 4, and if you have specific questions about what those entail, I can tell you. With all, and then we also, the other area we get federal funding is from the USDA for child nutrition programs, Fund II, as well as with special education through IDEA. With all of these funding situations, we have a sufficient fund balance to be able to cover a pause or delay in funding if one should happen. None of these areas of federal funding touch on the curriculum direction discussed in the executive order. Additionally, the funding in these areas have been authorized by acts of Congress and is generally recognized that to change that funding would take another act of Congress. There have been legal challenges brought by states, including Minnesota, to the threat of funding freezes pursuant to the executive orders. Judicial orders have been issued that restrain any freezing of federal funds based solely on an executive order, recognizing that an appropriate process must first take place before any funding freezes could happen. Next is the scope of the executive orders. Executive orders by themselves don't create law, amend existing law, or offer binding legal interpretations for organizations like schools. They direct federal agencies on how the president intends to enforce existing laws. In our case, that would be the Department of Education through its Office for Civil Rights. OCR's Acting Assistant Secretary has indicated that they will align enforcement with executive order. However, as previously noted, it must be implemented consistent with applicable law. That means their authority remains constrained by the text of current existing statutes and regulations, as well as by court interpretations of those laws. Without action from Congress or the judiciary, many of the interpretations and directions that are not in the text of the statute or strain interpretation cannot, on their own, change the current status of the law that we must follow. This discussion tonight centers around curriculum and whether that curriculum violates civil rights laws. First, the status of those laws related to curriculum include federal laws that prohibit the federal government from getting involved in state and local decisions about K-12 curriculum, and no executive order can overrule a federal law or regulation. Specifically, in the Every Student Succeeds Act, Section 852 6A, states that no officer or employee of the federal government shall, through grants, contracts, or other cooperative agreements, mandate, direct, or control a state, local education agency, or a school's specific instructional content, academic standards and assessments, curricula, or other program of institution, instruction developed and implemented to meet the requirements of this act. Additionally, there is another law called the General Education Provisions Act, which also prohibits any direction, supervision, or control by federal officials over curriculum, program, or instruction, selection of library resource, textbooks, or other printed or published instructional materials. When the U.S. Department of Education itself came into being, Congress included similar prohibitions about federal influence over curriculum in the Department of Education Organization Act. So when it comes to just local, state agencies have control over curriculum, an executive order by itself cannot change those federal laws. Second, what is the current status of civil rights laws? The text of the federal civil rights laws has not changed. While there have been Dear Colleague letters and FAQs issued along with the executive orders, neither the EEOC or the Department of Education has engaged in the process of rulemaking as it relates to new interpretations of the civil rights laws pursuant to the executive orders. The Department of Education has indicated it would revert back to the 2020 Title IX rules, and even if that is deemed compliant, the district is fully compliant with those processes related to Title IX investigations. The regulations promulgated pursuant to those statutes and the judicial interpretations of those statutes and law, we are fully compliant. Should either agency engage in rulemaking, that process will provide us notice and historically provides an opportunity for engagement. The EEOC currently does not have a quorum of its board, so it can't even start this process of engaging in rulemaking. Should the Department of Education do that, like I said, there is a whole process of engagement that generally takes some time and would provide us notice before we would have to decide if we needed to make any updates or changes. There's also been concern that if a complaint is lodged with the Office for Civil Rights, which oversees compliance of educational institutions with discrimination laws, that OCR itself may rescind funding for failure to comply with civil rights laws. OCR also has a process when they receive a complaint. They have a whole manual that they have to follow when they're investigating complaints. It provides the agency the opportunity to provide information, to argue its legal position at some point, and the Office for Civil Rights determines that law may be violated. They will engage that agency to see if they want to enter into a voluntary compliance agreement. That takes some time. If the agency decides it does not want to enter into such an agreement, it can challenge that in an administrative judicial hearing, which itself then could be appealed to a federal judicial court. So again, there's quite a process before you come to a place where you will be provided some direction before there could even be the impact of potential funding rescission. In the areas of civil rights laws, it is recognized that federal laws set the base, and state laws can't provide less protection but can provide more protection. In Minnesota, our Human Rights Act mandates that we may not discriminate based on gender identity. Attorney General Ellison provided notification that schools must comply with the Minnesota Human Rights Act, and Aseo Schools does fully comply with Minnesota law. So what does this all mean? As a school district, our statutory mandate is to educate all students, and we do that in compliance with state and federal laws. There are many portions of the relevant executive orders that is in line with current federal laws and rules and judicial interpretations, and our advisory lesson is compliant with that established precedent. To the extent federal statutes, rules, or judicial interpretations may change, it must follow an appropriate process which will allow us notice and the opportunity to update our policies if needed. Our state Human Rights Act rules and judicial interpretations remain very clear, and our advisory lesson is compliant with that. That is what I have for you.
If you want questions first, or?
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so the questions that we are asking for the board to consider this evening is, due to involving legal and political landscape, we just needed your input. Should we proceed as planned with our lesson? Are adjustments needed? Or should we consider an alternative approach in light of broader contextual factors?
Yeah, so before, so before I turn it over, I know one of the things we wanted to just remind board members of, and our visitors here today as well, is that because this is a work session, we generally do not make decisions. So this is a discussion today, and if any change in direction is needed, we would need to send that to the board. With that said, board members, any questions?
I guess it was my understanding, are we going over? Are you presenting the lesson tonight for us, Dr. Bassett?
No.
No, we're not. Oh, okay. That's what. Okay.
So we'll, with it being prepared for April 1st, you will review it, have an opportunity to review it before April 1st, or on April 1st?
The board?
Yeah.
You review when you want, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Tomorrow.
Because I know last year, sorry, Sarah, did you want to finish your thought? I jumped in.
Oh, well, I just had a question about the notice. Sorry, that was my understanding tonight, I thought we were going to be going over the lesson. So that's something we just will need to come in and view the lesson?
No, we can email it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess my first question is interesting tonight, as we're trying to define, you know, what is transparency? I've asked in the past, or kind of proposed, a retired principal has said, when you communicate especially sensitive topics, that his advice was, you know, three times, three different ways. Last year, I think some of the confusion, parents said that it was one email, and maybe they didn't receive that. So I'm just wondering if we're able to communicate in various ways and multiple times so that parents, you know, are informed, or also wondering how they will be able to view the lesson? Will it be an easier process for parents to view the lesson?
Yeah, logistically, it's been looked at and it's been reviewed, and it'll, it's going to be out for everyone to see on April 1st, and so parents don't have to come in and see it. It'll be out for view, and, yeah, so we've addressed that contingency program, and you can see what didn't work well the last time, so.
Okay. Okay. That's great.
Yep.
And just from how things were ruled out last year, is, will this be an opt-in or an opt-out process for students and staff?
You want to answer?
So pursuant to Minnesota statutes, parents always have the right to opt out of curriculum, and our, yeah, there is a process for that, that we follow for anything, whether it be math, or history, or any curriculum lesson. So that will still be followed. For staff, it, there's, it's whether they want to request a religious accommodation, and our human resources department has developed a process for that.
So I appreciate this coming to the board for discussion and understanding kind of what the facts are versus speculation. It's been an evolving environment. I think one of the challenges with the execution of a number of items under the resolution is that the resolution language was vague, and the board never collectively provided direction on the execution to begin with. So the advisory lesson being a separate lesson, which is, I understand it to be meeting, number one, support policies practiced in curricula that respect LGBT+ students and their families in June and throughout the year, there was never board direction to create a separate lesson. So that was always a point of confusion. So I just want to acknowledge that the road that we got here, we had a separate administration. I think there was some confusion even over the role of committees and what are advisory committees versus what are decision-making committees. So I'm glad that we're having this conversation. We do every year as part of the resolution check-in. So it's, even if we were to provide direction, there's really not a board action, because board action never created the lesson to begin with. So this is where it gets maybe a little interesting, and what's discussion versus what's board direction or action. So the board never collectively reviewed or specified an advisory lesson on its own. We have many different advisory lessons. We recognize many different months, and so I think it might have been, over time, just individual board members, like we had different expectations or perspectives on this interpretation. So I think we can fairly acknowledge that we can do better as a board when we do these types of actions, to be clear, and to not put our administration staff in the place of trying to accommodate six different board members with different interpretations. And even additionally, under seven, with honoring the history and highlighting contributions, we do that for every different cultural month, and we do that in different ways and different buildings. So again, this doesn't specify in a specific advisory lesson with any specific curriculum standards. That was, again, never a board direction explicitly. Even Census Resolution in Number Nine, that we would recognize it in June, that since has been changed without board direction or without a change to the resolution. Oh, no, I apologize. I think we, did we amend it in the board meeting, Thomas? Do you recall? Did we, I feel like maybe that might have happened. We should check the record on that. We might have had that as an amendment to the resolution at that time point. But the flag being raised on June 1st, there was never board direction to display the flag along with the other tribal nation flags in every school all year long. So we actually have quite a bit of problems when it comes to board direction and what was actually authorized in the resolution and how that's being interpreted. So, and that has unfortunately honestly led to what we see this evening and have seen for over two years since this has passed, which is a lot of interpretation, a lot of community concern, a lot of, from all different perspectives. And I think that we've really tried to, over the past two years, be respectful to all voices and to listen and to understand and to make modifications. When this advisory lesson was administered last year, we saw significant harm caused by students who felt that it was against their conscience with some of the particular elements of the lesson, and chose not to participate, which then created even more division in our community with, does that signal a lack of support, a lack of inclusion, a lack of respect for fellow classmates? So I really think that this board needs to think about what direction we're providing tonight in a way that's to what was actually passed, because we think about the legal framework that was just outlined. This 508, the 508 policy before this was actually the intent to comply with the Minnesota Human Rights Act, in ensuring that we were implementing the most recent recommendations of things like inclusive sports and activities and bathrooms. That is under the Human Rights Act. We intend to follow the law. I think as a board, we would never want to put our community, our district, our funding, our taxpayers at risk by not complying with state law and doing our best to navigate this legal framework as well. So to the extent of providing direction, I think we can weigh in on that, but it would be my recommendation personally that we not have a separate advisory lesson, because it was never directed by the board, and we should do so in a way that's consistent with the way that we treat every other identity, every other people group, and every other month and celebration. So the spirit of the resolution, as indicated in the early whereas components, I think that everyone here would be committed to ensuring an inclusive and safe environment, but I think we have to be very mindful of the execution of how we do that. Again, reiterating, the board's never provided explicit direction on the how to do that, nor have we had an opportunity to take any corrective action or provide any direction since the original implementation. That's my comments at this time, but others?
I do have a question. So what advisory lessons have the school board directed?
We don't typically direct specific curriculum or advisory lessons. Feel free to weigh in. We typically, when we have like math pilots or reading pilots, we typically are informed along the way, we get the results of the pilots. We, I'm trying to remember over time if we've ever voted on curriculum, but we've typically been actively aware of what the selection process is, how the pilots are going, ultimately what is recommended to the board.
But in this situation, do you think we should direct?
Well, we, I'm saying we didn't, or should we?
We didn't, or should we? Okay.
So this was the first time that there was ever a resolution that even used this type of language? So under Number One, practices in curricula, we've never, as a board, directed any type of specific curriculum be implemented. So this is definitely was new waters for the school district and the boards over the course of time. Okay. So I have a couple of questions, and I appreciate you taking the time to clarify this, because it is definitely, it feels like new terrain with what's happening at the federal level. So I appreciate the clarity on the local level. Some of the questions that I have, I previously sent to Dr. Heil, which I believe she shared with you, because they were a little bit more specific, and I know I wanted to give you guys time to prepare that. So my first question would be, if we choose not to move forward with the advisory lesson, would we be out of compliance with the Minnesota Human Rights Act as it stands? And it, the reason I ask this is because it looks like we are already in compliance with MNHRA, our Policy 102 and 514, which predate the advisory lesson mandate. Correct?
You want to use that? Use that?
Yeah, this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your voices. You have a quiet voice.
I have a quiet voice. If we don't do the advisory lesson, are we still in compliance? Doing the, it is not necessary to do the advisory lesson per se to be in compliance. It's, like with anything, there are layers of why you do certain things, but if the board would decide to, you know, whether to rescind the resolution, it really then goes to administration to continue to do what they do, right, in running the school?
Which that's typically how boards and administration function, correct? We set policy, and then administration sets procedure. And so I do want, I would encourage everybody to look at Policy 102 and 514, because I believe they set us up really strongly to support our students and students that fall into the LGBTQIA+ community. I think they're really well-written and recently written policies, so thank you for clarifying that. Then I was wondering if you could provide, and this is a lengthy one, so bear with me, provide a cost impact analysis of the resolution, particularly regarding the advisory lesson? And the details I'm looking for are around expenses spent, such as time spent developing the lesson, staff hours for the advisory committee during work time, costs for ESP and staff supervision during advisory or opt-out period, and the cost of the professional development. And the reason I'm asking this is we're limited on time within our school year as well as finances, and as we've seen in surrounding school districts, we're facing budget issues, and we know that that most likely will come for us as well. So always making sure we're making the best decisions with the main purpose of the district at the forefront, which is academics. So that's kind of where my question is rooted.
Well, that doesn't go to Amy, so.
That doesn't go to Amy?
No, that's Amy, General Counsel.
Sorry. I was looking at Amy. You've got all the answers.
Yeah, but we can pull in the information you need. It'll take some time to be able to do that, though.
I think it would be really helpful to have a picture of what that, what our investment looks like in terms of that lesson.
Why just this lesson, then? Because we're not doing all lessons?
Well, this is a set apart, specific, outside of the bounds of what we're actually required by law to do. So I think one, another kind of how resolutions and direction arise, typically in our budget process, when we have new curriculum, that has come through from time to time. Sometimes if it's within the budget, it doesn't change, because it's offsetting other curriculum changes. But even most recently, when we had math, reading, science, that did come through our budget process, and that did show up as line items in terms, especially when we were increasing a bump and had a lot of curriculum items to execute. So I think this is, I think another issue with a process of resolutions that direct particular action is that it didn't have any budget considerations. So out of alignment with how we typically think about incremental costs. When we had the FACE Committee, that I believe came through as a strategic investment at that time as well, we decided to keep that. So we typically have quite a lot of protocols when it comes to new direction that ties to budget, so that there is kind of these, the clarity as to what we're approving. And this never had a budget consideration, nor were, technically, it never came through as a particular line item in the budget to authorize. But again, that's not necessarily the case every time, because sometimes they're inside the budgets.
And can I just, I just want to be clear?
Yes.
The law doesn't say, do a specific advisory lesson. The advisory lesson is wholly consistent with the law. And in the area of discrimination, when you have complaints based on various protected areas, a lot of times what you do is you do training, you do education. So it's consistent with that.
But not required.
It doesn't specifically say.
Because there's other policy that's already standing that meets that requirement. I think that's what I'm trying to get at, is we have really great policies.
It could come through policy, and it could come through, right, we could, we could be doing this same thing through policy.
And then could you provide insight into potential funding risks if we remain out of compliance? And I'm, sorry, Dr. Heil.
I'm sorry, but we're not out of compliance.
No. If we are found to be out of compliance, and she explained that.
We're not.
I'm going to ask my question. I'd appreciate a clear dollar figure, as well as details on which areas might be affected. If the board decides not to comply, what budget assessment adjustments will be necessary? And I'm asking this question out of the desire that that impact wouldn't fall on our students or student-facing staff. And based on kind of some of what you shared, it's how long could we withstand a pause in federal funding? Because 10% is 37 million, correct? 10% of our budget, our $400 million budget.
10% of our budget, our $400 million budget.
More than three years.
We could withstand it for more than three years. Thank you. And then what is the best guess, and this might go to Amy, I don't know if you have an idea, in terms of the duration we would have before we would be penalized if all of these processes you mentioned line up?
Erica, can I ask you, just, what was the first question, just?
The very first one?
Not the first one. The first part of this question was.
Potential funding risks if we remain out of compliance, as noted by the federal.
Okay, thank you.
So I think to clarify, as Amy outlined, the different sources, I think you're asking for the dollars, which I think John can get us.
Yep, yep. And I already asked this question via email. I just wanted it on the record and before the audience here.
Well, I think first, I'd like to know, has, when was the last time a K-12 school had funding withheld? Does that happen in recent times? I know there's stuff going on with Columbia.
John, can you repeat the question, please?
I guess when is the last time that federal money was withheld from a K-12 school?
I've never seen them actually go.
Right. So like, we're talking about it never, has it never happened? I don't know if we need to spend a lot of time researching, never happened?
$40 million on our kids, like that, I think that's something that's worth a discussion.
I just want to clarify, which kids are you actually talking about?
All the kids in the district.
Because this lesson, this advisory, represents our entire, we have a very diverse district. So I'm just curious about exactly what you're talking about.
I'm talking about all the children, because funding impacts every child.
So how far does this rabbit hole go? Because they also talk about racial indignation, some of these executive orders too. So we're talking about one particular group of students, so I'm just curious of like, how, how far does the rabbit hole go? And the question, I guess what I would say is, as simple as it is, is yes, proceed, myself as a board member, I would say proceed as planned. We've already said, in every single situation, we always have opt-outs for our families and students. I think that we can plan for that in a more planful way, so, you know, which we are. But, you know, our point is to ensure all of our students feel safe and heard and valued. And I, I'm just not sure where this conversation is coming from, like what's the kind of conception of it? Because we are in compliance with our laws.
And were before this. And so I think that's.
I'm sorry, what?
And we were before the resolution was written. We were in compliance before it was written, due to our.
Well, there was a reason we wanted to ensure, as a board, that we represented every single student in our staff that represent and live in our district. And that's kind of, that's really the point, in honoring, honoring that. So I think the question before us is, are we proceeding as planned? And I am saying now, yes. For me, Kelsey, as a board member, we are, I would proceed as planned.
Yeah, and this conversation for me came up.
Because that's the question that was asked.
Great. And I'm responding for myself. As we prepare for our upcoming discussion on transparency and integrity with TeamWorks here in our board operations conversation, it's important to acknowledge that this resolution was not handled through a transparent process or the traditional policymaking channels. At a minimum, I hope we can establish procedures to prevent this kind of ad hoc policymaking in the future. And ideally, I believe it would reflect the integrity of the board to revisit the resolution and follow the proper policy process. So I would choose either to modify or not do the lesson.
Any other board members want to provide response to Dr. Heil's question?
Yeah, I also agree with Erica's thoughts to revise or take a pause and re-establish as our current board taking a look at this. I think hopefully all of us here, I mean, for me too, we care about all students. I think that anytime we involve sexuality, it's always tied to a person's belief system. It's just a very delicate, sensitive topic, so I think we definitely want to do things that respect and, like Dr. Heil always says, all means all, all means all. So I would love to reevaluate and really focus on anti-bullying, on manners, respect, compassion, kindness. And I think it starts with, you know, all of us in leadership roles modeling that.
And I think we'll probably have more productive conversation once we see this year's lesson, because I know, I believe there's been modifications from last year. Is that right, or no?
Okay, I'm just going to, I'm just going to be Dr. Heil. Okay, so yeah, so we, so we do have it, but in the lesson, and I think what the concern is, we discuss binary. We discuss more gender, so whatever we do to it, that's in there. So that, that's, that's the conflict for some.
And it's been an issue since we began. It's been, since this resolution was restarted last year, this year, or so. We have discussed this every year, and we've had difficult conversation and different perspectives. And I think we've sought to engage respectfully on it. I really believe that this resolution never authorized a specific, separate advisory lesson. And I feel that in the best interest of being inclusive and having consistency, we should approach the same topic similarly to every other people group and every other cultural recognition. And I think that would relieve pressure from this year, from the lesson, as being a separate lesson. I think it would remove the possibility of harm of the large opt-out, potential opt-out numbers, and even harm caused amongst staff members who felt it was one outside their area of expertise. It put them in a difficult position with parents as well, because this is a very hot topic. Anytime, we know, anytime we talk about identity, whether it's gender identity, racial identity, thus, you know, parents are really, really care about what the school is committing to their children about their identity. So I think it's, it's healthy that parents are engaged and that we're having the conversation. What sparked it now, yes, the executive order did spark it, because we needed to assess. We needed to understand what's within the Human Rights Act versus beyond that, and what might the orders mean. So I don't think, I'm not advocating for a reactionary response to executive orders. I'm indicating this has been an ongoing discussion since the beginning. And I think we really need to look at the decisions that have taken place to execute this. Again, without, in the past administration, before Dr. Heil, there was never board direction for some of the ways that this was executed. So I think we need to continue the dialogue, but my direction would be that we should take a different path and make it consistent with every other people group and cultural celebration and recognition. So that's, that's my view.
Thank you. And Erica, too? Yeah. I would like to keep going with it. I know there were some issues with the rollout last year. Some of the opt-in, a little confusion maybe on the day of, right, as far as, you know, miscommunication about whether this is mandatory, whether this is optional, and would you rather go playing your phones with your friends in the cafeteria or something like that? So would like to see that kind of short of. But with the opt-out functionality and things, yeah, I don't see any reason why not to proceed with it.
We have looked in correcting all the logistic problems we had last year.
Yeah, thank you. As it was stated, we have been talking about this resolution for quite some time now. Even when it's not in a meeting, the community's talking about it. I have had a front row seat to some of the discussions that have happened since last year when the, when the lesson was rolled out. And I know that there were a lot of lessons learned from that process. And I know that there have been some changes that have been made. And the anticipation of that day, I think, is much more planned and intentional than it was in the past. And that's part of learning and growing, whether that's as individuals, professionals, or as a system. I am definitely in support of continuing with our current direction. I know that we will take it because of the executive order. And General Counsel Moore, thank you for the thorough overview of your research report today. There was actually a lot more in there than I expected. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, not only, as it was stated, the executive order isn't applicable, but we were elected to govern the school board, not DC. And it was a board that passed this resolution. And so for me, I don't see any reason to change course. I do think that we need to continue to improve. I think we need to continue to create the culture that we've been striving for within our schools. That part hasn't changed, but I don't see any reason to change because of the executive order or any of the chaos that seems to be happening outside of our district.
Because everybody had opportunity to complete their thoughts for this discussion. So unfortunately, that divided direction. But we trust your judgment. And I know, I would say that we all have the most confidence in Dr. Bass, Dr. Heil, in navigating this. And I think this will be something we continue to evaluate as we go forward.
No? Thank you, again.
Do you have your hands?
Dr. Heil, it is back to you.
All right, thank you, Chair Brooks. So next, we're going to be working with Christine Wableski from TeamWorks, which we have had years of experience with. And we started at our professional development training in January, where the board did incredible work around proposed statement of transparency. And so we're going to continue to finish that off today, actually, hopefully to leave here with a statement. And then we're going to look into structure and flow of committee. So welcome, Christine.
Thank you very much. And are we okay if we just let people flow?
Yeah, for a second.
All right, I'm going to hand out a few.
What can I help with?
We'll do a grounding activity first, which we would have done beforehand, but you needed to get through that first agenda. So I am going to have you each take. Here we go. One postcard. There's going to be a change, going to be a switch. And reset.
Thank you.
Do you want to complete this? Thank you, sweetheart. All right. Let me grab the clicker. Okay, so we will get to the statement of transparency that you all worked on, and you all received the report from our session with the draft statement from all of your work previously. So what we're going to do, like we've done when I've done work sessions or retreats with the board in the past, is we're going to start with a little grounding activity. So this is all about collaborative creativity. And you are one board, even though you have differences of opinion, you still have to collaborate together on the direction of the district. So what I'd like you to do is take the very blank side of your postcard, put it in front of you, and be ready to follow the directions. They are up on the screens. They'll come up one at a time. They're going to be simple tasks, but they may be a little difficult. I've done this with some other teams before. So just be willing to go with the flow, is what I'm asking you to do. So what I want you to do, so the front side is the blank side. Draw some kind of form. It can be anywhere. It can be big, it can be little, just one form, and then pass it to your left. And I'm going to have you two work together, and then the board members, I'll just, we'll just pass it to the left. So draw a form of any kind. A form, yep. You can draw a shape, something like that. You don't have to draw. You can draw a line, you can draw something geometric. It's just a form. Keep it simple. Can I just draw what I usually doodle? You can just, don't get too detailed. You're going to be building on each other's form.
And anywhere on the card?
Correct. Can be big, can be small. And then you're going to pass it to the board member on your left. I will do the through. Okay, good. On the blank side?
Oh, shoot.
Do you want a new card?
Apparently not.
Would you like a new card?
No.
No?
Thank you.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right, so now you received the card from your other board member. Now I want you to make something out of the form. So if there's already something there, expand on it. So if it's some kind of free form, you can create a person, an object, you know, a building, whatever you choose to do. And we're going to then have you pass it again. And you can take a couple of minutes on this one. It's going to start getting interesting. You good? Just keep this time. If you're ready, you can just pass it to the left. I'm getting a sense of what it's like in some of the schools. All right, the next is you can add some context. So you can totally change the shape of whatever direction your picture, whatever is on there. Do not add text yet. That's coming.
Still a drawing, that word.
Yep, stay with the drawing.
Anywhere on it?
Anywhere on it. I have seen groups completely change the course of a story on the card. And when you're ready, you can pass your card on. And now, add some action. Can be drama. Good, ready, pass it on. Now you can add text. You can create the story if you like. Can be. Make your story come to life here. And when you're done, I'm going to have you stand up. Kelsey, can we use just this little corner of the table? And have you put all your postcards? And have you put all your postcards here, so you can kind of take a look at all of them. Y'all can stand up. Come on up. Take a look at all of your fine artwork. Come take a look, yeah. Come see what you've created. Got a couple more coming? So you can see the artwork, the stories. All right, wait a minute before you go. Okay, I'm going to just mix these up. Oh, wait.
None of us are artists in this group.
What I'm going to have you do is I'm going to have you put your name and address on the back. Then you're going to hand it to the person on your right this time. And they are going to write to you, after you write your address, some advice or compliment. And then I'll collect those cards, and we'll have them mailed to you.
So we write our own address?
You write your own address, and then you're going to pass it to your right. And that person is going to send you a compliment or a bit of advice. Kind advice. Did you pass it here?
Oh, I didn't write it, sorry.
Okay.
I'll have to write it now.
Yes, because I'm going to collect these and mail them. No time like the present.
Get her done.
Get her done is right. May I take that?
Thank you. You guys didn't need to answer each other?
No, we've seen enough. Yeah, we'll do a camera. Here we go. Vicky, can I have this?
Feel me too? Here, now, stop her. Have you tried them free striped? That was like the thing with kids apparently.
All right, so now. Done the grounding activity. Well, recall back to when we had a retreat, and we talked about transparency. So these slides will be familiar. We had the conversation about what does it mean to be transparent in relation to being in a government institution, right? So you have obligations within the law as school board members. And so a lot of what the bullets talk about are the things that you have to follow. So you're making big decisions with input. You don't necessarily have to do that, but you all have stated that you want to be able to do that. You want to be able to follow open meeting laws, share timely, accurate information, and then be accountable with the reports and data, right? That's something that is very common. So you're trying to define what it means to be transparent within your role as school board members or within your role as leadership in a school district. So as I mentioned at the retreat, lots of school boards that we've been working with over the past couple of years have been struggling with being accused of not being transparent. Because everyone has a very different definition of what they mean. And sometimes they want you to be able to share information that by law you cannot. So that's why we had the activity that we did the last time, which is recall that you all went into groups of two, three groups of two. And you decided to articulate what it meant to be transparent within the parameters you have of being a school board member and all that the law kind of constrains you with. So we had the report. You provided some similar ideas of what you wanted from transparency across your three groups. And this is the proposed statement of transparency that I pulled together from all of your different statements that you provided from your groups. So this was in the report. You have copies of them in front of each of you as well. And what I'm going to do, since you've all had a chance to look at that, is have you get into two groups this time. And I'm going to have you discuss them in your groups and see if you have any changes. If you like it as it is, great. If you have suggested changes, I'm going to ask you to each take a flip chart and write the suggested changes on there, so that we could see what the suggestions are. Does that work for you? I know in the past, you all have said it's nice to do some breakup work at work sessions. So how about if we start with 10 minutes on the time timer to have you do your small group discussion? Is that enough time, do you think? You can always add five minutes if we need to. Good? All right, so the small groups are up there. My suggestions are Tanya, Thomas, and Erica work together. And then Sarah, Keith, and Kelsey work together. Is that good? And you can take whatever marker you prefer here. I do have the smelly markers. So how about Kelsey, Sarah, and Keith over here? And then you three over here. You're all close. You get to choose which markers you like.
And what is it that you want us to write?
Write any changes. If you like it as it is, great. Have some discussion in your group. Talk about this proposed definition. Again, it's based on the conversations we had at the retreat, but it is in a statement together. So take a look, have your discussion. If you have suggested changes, please be specific on your flip chart paper, and then we'll talk through it as a full board. Good? If you have questions or...
The bullet points for this is all?
This is all one statement. Yeah, okay. No changes for your group? Are you all ready?
Yeah.
All right, we'll do the... Okay, so we'll start with this group, because I know what they're already thinking. But share your thoughts.
Aside from like if comms wants to tighten or words, like we didn't have any changes.
Okay. And this is your statement of transparency. It's not all of the implementation of how we're going to achieve it, right? So...
Well, yeah, we had a little discussion on critical. What does critical mean? That can mean different things to different people. So I think we kind of said, well, as we have this, we can always identify when we feel like it has or has not been met, and we can learn the norm of what that means as we go.
Yeah, and it's a statement. I mean, it is not a policy either.
Yeah. I mean, I think we just talked about like that last bullet. I mean, I think we understand where it's going, but like even kind of more plain language for people.
Sure.
And also, is there any way we can kind of say like what we can and... Like what can we share legally? Like it's like almost like we can't share like student data. We can't share personnel data. We can share this. Like we can't share like police report. You know what I mean? There's certain things, like, and I think it would be helpful, because I think when things happen in our district, people... Well, even the incident that we've been in the news a couple of times, and it's like, you know, we can't, like, we just can't. And a lot of times, we don't, we're not even privy to that information, you know? But I don't think we really know that. So even if it could be like a little bit more... This is like, I get where that's going, but we get it because we're in it every day. So like if it could even be like simpler.
Do you all generally agree with that idea?
And to build on what Kelsey said, I think it's a good point, is that there might be, there's top of mind things that people need to know. So I think even being proactive and putting some of that information out there about like what we can and can't share, particularly with fights. We can't identify students. We can't identify discipline. We can't, there's just like, just the common ones. Maybe there's an FAQ common.
Yeah. Because then I think we can get to like, what are people actually looking for? Like, I mean, is there some data that they like feel like they would want? Because I think sometimes we're like, we can't share that information. And then some people are like, oh, we know you can't share like student data, but can you share, you know, I don't know. We can get to that hard.
So I am just putting a note here for kind of focus on that very last bullet and simplify it, give some very specific examples, common examples of what you can share and legal examples of what you can't. Yes? I'm seeing this. Okay, and I can work with Dr. Heil and her team to get that to you so that you can finalize it. But it sounds like we're close. Okay, all right. Well, that was quick. All right, so the structure and flow. I just want to start with, this is going to be a bit of an overview. And I know you have some veteran members of the board here. You have some newish members of the board. So we're going to do an overview of structure and flow. Most of our conversation is likely to at least start on looking at what are your different committees and advisories? Are they reporting to the board? Or do they report to the administrative team under the management role? So is it kind of a governance function or a management function? What I can tell you before we start the overview is this is another challenge that school boards regularly deal with. And unfortunately, our state laws sometimes conflict with good governance. And they put school board members on what would typically be management committees. So you talked about curriculum, or we talked about special ed. And sometimes board members need to be on committees by law. But if you want to follow good governance, we've had school boards say, so what is my role on those committees? Since I'm a decision maker, it could be a conflict for me to actually participate in the discussion and recommend to me what the state, what we should be moving forward as. So that's just a precursor to everything. So as we talk about sound structure and workflow, we have your informal committee meetings. And the ones that are specifically of the board are ones like your policy committee, or if you have an executive committee, or the chair or the chair and vice chair sometimes meet with the superintendent. So what are the specific committees of just board members, sometimes with support from an administrator on administrative team? So you have committees of the board. Then you have advisory committees. And we have what we used to call councils that used to kind of differentiate between what was a board committee and what was a management committee. They used to be called councils. And now it's all intermingled. So the only thing that's different from committees and advisories and councils are task forces, because they're time-specific. So they come and they go, they have their job, and they go away. So you have your informal committee meetings. They generally do not have authority to take action on behalf of the school district. It's the school board or the office of the superintendent, right? Then you have what we're doing today, which is we're calling this a board learning session. So some school districts call them work sessions. Some call them study sessions. Some call them learning sessions. Where you have meetings where the board can get together with the superintendent's office and discuss issues in detail, right? And you have the purpose of this work session. Some school boards that we've worked with have combined their work session night with their business, formal business meeting night, and it's a lot in one night. Some don't even have work sessions. Where we've advised them, it's a great idea to have work sessions. It tends to reduce some of the conflict and the difficulties that come at a business meeting if you're trying to make decisions and get information all at the same time. So you have your committee meetings. You have your informal board learning sessions. And we say informal, because you generally don't follow Robert's Rules of Order in these kinds of sessions. You might at some of the advisory committee meetings, depending on, you know, what they look like. And then you have your formal board action meetings. So that's your business meeting. And that's where you're going to follow Robert's Rules of Order. You're going to vote, take action on specific items. And that tends to be, if you're working well, probably... And that tends to be, if you're working well, probably a shorter meeting than you might have if you don't have work sessions. In fact, I've worked with a school board that had done away with their work sessions. Their business meetings were four and five hours long every time. And then they decided to add a 45 minute work session to the front end of their meeting, still didn't really help. Once they separated it out and were able to articulate, you know, we want to be able to get to things a week or two or farther out before it comes to the, the business meeting, that's where you have this, that's why we call it that workflow. So committee meetings, informal meetings, and then you have your, your formal meetings. And ideally, you're back mapping to the time that you have to take any action. So that's what we're talking about here. The cycle and flow of how the information gets from a governance committee, so something like policy committee, to the full board is also sometimes an issue with school boards. So we have this image here, we created this with one school district where there was a legislative committee that was of the board. So it was board members that mostly comprised that committee. They had a policy committee, and then they had a third committee. And they all wanted to have a very specific flow where if something had to come, action had to come before the school board, that there was opportunity for input from the full board before action was taken on behalf of the board. So this cycle that you see here talks about kind of an ongoing cycle where you have your committee that develops draft recommendations that the board needs to consider. It goes to the full board at a work study session, sometimes at a business meeting if they don't have one or if they don't have time. And you have some review and discussion, and ideally, there's time for revision and clarification at the committee meeting before the board takes action. That is a desired flow, especially if it's something that could affect the school district. We know that sometimes you have to short circuit these things and you have to jump some steps. But this was a suggested cycle so that one committee isn't kind of doing things on its own. In your case, if you had a committee of three board members and they hadn't come back to the full board and they're acting on the district's behalf, the other three board members might feel like it's not necessarily moving with the full direction of the school board and support. Okay, so that's what we're trying to do is address gaps. As you're preparing your annual calendar of your committees, it's also good to keep this in mind. Back mapping from when the board, if the board needs to take action. You all have a one-year board plan that you've been following. Most of you know that we at TeamWorks recommend a three-year board governance plan. Years two and three are generally not full, but it's based on the five authorities of the school board. And you map that out over three years. So things that generally would be on there are how frequently do you want to have board learning sessions, for example? So retreats, you might say you want to do that twice a year. If you know you have board elections coming up and you want to be able to do board orientation, you would put that on there. If you know you have big changes coming up or consideration of a referendum, this is just an example. If you had a levy that was up for renewal, that would be on a three-year calendar. So we would put things on the board governance calendar so that you could keep looking out over every three years. So you, you do the one-year calendar regularly. And that sets up the flow going from work session to business meeting. In some cases, also from your advisory committees, right? I know that there's been some questions about what are the, what's the authority of the advisories and who do they report to? So we are going to have those conversations in the packet. You have a table where I have started to consider the actions you want to take and how you want to review the committees. Okay, anyone have any questions or not coming at you? Yeah. Okay. Overview so far, all right. All right, so just want to do a quick check in first on, so this is one of your work sessions and you have your formal board action meetings. Just want to do a quick check in on how do you think they're generally going? So I also thank you to Sherry, we have post-its. What I'd like you to do is articulate what you think is working well in terms of your work sessions and what may be confusing or challenging to you. And then for the business meetings, same questions, what's working well and what may be confusing to you? So on post-its. Go ahead, please put if it's a work session, you can do WS if you prefer that. And you have the markers from the form, great. Where would you want to put these? You're going to put them right up here on this trust paper. And when you're ready, just go ahead and post them on the flip chart. I don't know, for a couple of you, it's still pretty fresh. But there are reasons why you want to be on board. Thank you, Kelsey, first one up.
Wow. Hopefully they're all, hopefully they're all was working well.
See, second term, that's. Read a book.
He's done.
Oh. Chat GPT though.
Are we all, is it still working?
Yeah.
We'll take a couple of minutes. So let's take a look. So for work sessions, all right, great content. This one says overall no comments, but can we make them more of a conversation with cabinet administration versus presentation of questions? So I think that's come up before too, right?
Can you say that one again? I'm sorry.
So overall, no comments about work sessions, but can we make them more of a conversation with cabinet administration versus presentation and question?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Working well, board questions to the superintendent in advance of the session. Responsive to the board's interest in learning more about specific initiatives, topics, and priorities. All right. What's working well for work sessions here? Partnership collaboration with Tanya and Thomas and Thomas leading. So it must be the leadership collaboration. What's challenging? Would like to create a more collaborative environment where any question is seen as an opportunity to team and increase trust. How do you set a topic on the work session agenda? I understand our, I can't read this word. Our desire, thank you, is to be aligned, however, there are topics we agree on. So is debate acceptable during work sessions? Ah, there are topics we won't agree on, thank you.
Those are mine. I'm just reading.
Yeah. Right, and there, and so one of the things I like to tell board members is you will debate. And you will more often than not have your debate at work sessions, especially once you get into the flow of things. And then you get to the business meeting and you take your action. And sometimes, once you get into the flow, even if you disagree, hopefully, it's not a three-three vote because that makes it difficult for you. But once you have action and you move forward, then you move forward with one voice as a board, right? Whoever won that particular action, you move forward and you say that, that is the will of the board, that's the will of the district. And so when you have your work session agendas, that's the time to ask the questions, get the differences of opinion out. And you may even be accused later on of having just rubber stamped the administration because you did all the debate in your work session and less so at the business meeting. And so some school boards get to the point where they're actually saying, we had a lot of debate about this in two work sessions, right? And we had input through our decision-making process and we had a forum and engagement session. And in the end, this is what our decisions are and this is why we're voting. So it sounds like we're wondering about how do the topics get on the agenda? And how do we have that, those discussions, kind of like you did tonight? Okay. Informal, interested in finding out that sweet spot of what's in and out scope for our role, okay? Work session challenge, room to tighten up presentations with reports in detail. Work session, what's going well? Plus.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair leading, thank you. Questions in advance in real time as evolve, discussion before advances to board meeting. We just talked about. Hearing from school site staff directly is nice at the work sessions. Presentations have been shorter, leaving more time for discussion, so again, moving in that direction. Do we ever provide the audience to comment? Should we also do engagement session in addition, other committees example legislator? So generally, school boards don't have public comment during a work session because it is your time with the administrative team. Some school districts and school boards will have other things that they do. So they might have specific engagement around a decision. Some school boards have listening sessions, with or without topics. But they are also structured so that people understand like, this is what to expect when you're going to. Okay, work session, what else is working well? Informal and real, topics are open to board members additions, audio recorded versus video recorded, tables and the forum room. Not tonight, but yes. Reports and presentations, so all of those things, right? We talked about this one. Staff taking questions or criticism personally, defensive language and body language, so this is a challenge, sounds like. Work session, even better if leader voice in discussions, continue board breakout like the vision cards, okay? Student participation in the past has been valuable for work sessions. And you have, you do have student board members representatives, correct?
Yeah, but we're, is that right for me to say? Okay, but we're going to be revamping that, talking to Chair and Vice Chair. So it's more, getting more information from them than just reporting on an event. What's going on, so.
So there are ex officio members too, right? Not holding members. All right, so the business meetings, can we truncate items that are redundant or are they required? Ie any reports that could be received via email instead of being shared this way?
We also went to a national convention in Louisiana and we are able to convert something in writing to a podcast. So you may get that coming up, so we're. So you can listen while you're driving.
Upfront portions are lengthy, it waters down the attention on each area. Challenging, the last one was long.
Christine, can you go back to one upfront? What was that?
This one?
Whatever said upfront was the first line.
Upfront portions of the meeting, I'm assuming, are lengthy and waters down the attention on each area.
All the reports, there's some redundancy with the points of pride in the.
Oh, I got you.
Have presentations, it can just be a lot.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate no surprises as pre-work is done at the work session. Challenge, would like. Challenge, would like to see more timely meetings, less time on redundant information, communicate new information during brief points of pride. So it is nice to have all that information, but is there a way to condense it? All right, uh, current school board, uh, rep model has not proven to be as valuable for student engagement and decision-making, so you just address that. Um, uh, it's working well, it's smooth and efficient. Should we change audience opportunities to be? Sorry, I'm having difficulty with this handwriting tonight. Prior to board meetings, uh, role of student liaisons, do they feel valued? Okay, that's come up three times now. Um, audience has to wait sometimes hours for the board to make a decision. Yeah, that is, that is just part of what happens, um, especially if you have a lot on the agenda. Uh, let's see, points of pride, right now, long. Decorum, uh, community is generally respectful toward each other at your meetings. Um, school student presentations, so is this a positive? I think Thomas, this might be yours, is this a positive or is this something you wanted to say as a challenge?
School student presentations. Oh, that is a positive, so that's, um, when our team's from the visit and.
Oh, yeah.
Like, 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 CTE?
Yeah, 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 always.
That was such a good presentation.
Good. Uh, let's see, advisory committees, uh, maybe work session, uh, opportunity to act on. Uh, recommendations or discussion further, okay? And, uh, a plus is the pre-discussion at work sessions for board meetings. Plus is policy detail intention and, uh, plus is public comment rules. All right, so you have a sense there, I mean, there is some agreement here on what's working and what's not. Uh, and I think you have enough information, I will take this and do the report like I usually do and send that to the superintendent. Uh, and then I expect she's gonna have some suggestions for you as well. I don't know that you need to work through these, you've shared this information, some of it you've shared previously and the, the administration is working to fix, let's, some of the presentations, it's slowly moving in that direction. Any other questions or comments?
I can answer the how things get on the agenda and we've been talking about making it even easier. So at the end of each work session, we ask, what do you want on the agenda? But at that time, we've both said that, like, you know, we just had a full work session, we're not always, like, thinking, we're tired and, like, late at night. So we talked about on Google form, um, that anybody can type in, um, either questions that they have that they are interested in having answers to or want more info on, um, or adding agenda, uh, recommendations for agenda topics. So we haven't worked out the details of how that might be executed, but we wanna make sure it's as open as possible to add, um, or have input. We can't necessarily, if everybody adds everything they want, we're probably not too much, so we'll have to kind of work out if we get a flood of items, how we'll work through that. Or maybe we can do that at the end of the work session and we see what we have, so I think we want it to be very open.
Are you going to suggest any lens for adding agenda items, like how it relates to the strategic plan or upcoming decisions? Or if you had a board work plan, right, does it, does it line up with some of the things? I know there are some things that come down, I'll just say the read act because that's easy to deal with. So sometimes things come up that you weren't planning on, um, that you need to address as a board, um, give advice to, or the superintendent might want to share information with the board. Do you have any lens you wanna be looking at?
We had the one document that talks about, like, to flow, um, and it was sort of with the resolutions, but I think it applies to any topic. Um, so that it would come to work session first before board meeting, things like that, but, um, we've kind of had, uh, ways of working that if more than one board member has interest in that topic, because then it just kind of maybe, um, narrows it, but we could develop that. Um, because if we have every single individual board member.
Yeah.
Having work session, I, that may not be consensus of the board, then we're, may not be using our time wisely. So I think to your point, we can, maybe that's something that we work on in chair vice chair meeting and then bring back to the board.
Okay, good.
Um, I do have a question, so I can't remember, are there, the students' board liaisons, are they compensated?
Yes, they are.
They aren't in every.
My advisory group isn't, I have a superintendent, I don't know if you know, I have a superintendent's advisory room. Yes, they are.
Good. Any other comments, suggestions about the work sessions and the business meetings?
I just think that, like, I do think that we, I would like to kind of talk about, like, just our engagement with our community because I think that, um, aside from kind of our strategic directions, there are stuff that comes up specific to our community and OCEO that is germane and it may be timely and so, you know, however you guys come up with the process, I think that that could be.
Well, we were just chatting in policy session, actually, um, about, like, what, um, policies come up and might we want to proactively put engagement session in or listening session in, in advance, so we get more input upfront before we go into the policy? I think we could think about that, where, um, our work sessions are board meetings or tier point, like, hot topics. I think Hastings has a committee that's, um, it's a, uh, I don't know if it's standing, but I know it's like, it's more, it's assembled with specific topics in mind, so it's assembled and then periodically they meet and they're providing input on specific topics. Um, so maybe it's, um, safety at schools, um, or maybe when we see things in the media and we'll get concerned that, oh my gosh, what's happening? Is, are there, are there more fights? Um, we can be proactive, so sort of the response, we're proactive. And I, and, um, we haven't had listening sessions in a while, so we should re-engage on those too.
And it would be nice, I don't know how, what's to done, but we could talk as well, the format, that correctly, so that all people can have a voice. There's been ways that it's been done through focus groups with, like, um, Reimagine Minnesota, where you actually had, like, seniors and juniors where the name was, they took the information and people can have that and that was shared out, so, yeah.
I was gonna second that, having, if you're going to have engagement versus a forum, a forum really is an engagement. It's people coming up and sharing over two minutes, right, what they're gonna do. But if you want to have engagement, it's a very good idea to have it facilitated, to have a role specific, to have facilitators in small groups and then share out some of that information and always, always, always share those reports out with your community, given your transparency piece. That's one of the things, the International Association of Public Participation has said, the biggest mistake that public organizations make is you do all this engagement and then you don't share the reports after the fact or the decision and why the decision was made. You know, it's easy enough to put those out there and say, this is what happened and this is how we're using the information.
Because I think we've been quite successful with keys with our attendance boundary. Because if you have smaller tables where everybody's voice is able to be heard and pulling that back in, so.
Any other discussion around what's working, what's not? And ideas from that? Okay. All right, so now we're gonna work, uh, a little bit more looking at committees, councils, advisories. So we talked about the fact that you have committees of the board for your governance work. So there's executive, there's policy, sometimes there's finance and planning. Um, I mentioned one district has a legislative action committee of the board. Um, and then you also have the, the advisories of the committees for the management work. That's where you will see more committees than under the board. Um, and so things like curriculum, community ed, special ed, I know you have a list of others and I have that, I happen to have that list too. Um, so there's a number of those committees. Ideally, they would be operating with a very specific charge or purpose and then limitation statements or some kind of parameters about what their role is. And a focus for their work and, um, perhaps, so you have a one-year board agenda, there might be suggestions for what this committee would be covering in terms of topics. So, school boards generally don't have management committees, though I've seen it happen, like negotiations, they're generally not doing those or the calendar committee or technology or curriculum, those are not committees that board members are generally running or generally on, again, unless it's required by law. And then you wanna have a clear understanding of what the role is of a board member or board members on those committees.
I have seen a fair number of districts have curriculum committees and state law does specifically identify that under responsibilities to manage. So that's one that I've seen more, kind of, it's just, you described it as management, but I have seen a lot of districts have curriculum committees. And we used to actually have a board member sit on the curriculum.
And, and when school boards still decide to have a board member represented on a curriculum committee, it's, uh, it's a very good idea to say, what's their role?
Yes.
Right, are they there as a liaison to the board and they're basically there to listen and then report up to the board what's happening at that committee? Um, and, uh, and I've had school boards that I've worked with who literally were running negotiations and were on the calendar committee and the school board member said, I don't understand why we're on that, it feels very strange, given the fact that we have a committee of mostly staff who are charged with developing it and then it comes to us as a board and we take those actions. So that was kind of the defining line is, even if I'm required to be on the committee, what's my role? So that when we make the decision eventually, it's really clear that we are choice makers and we're not the people who are developing options. So that's what we're kind of, I want you to be thinking about as we talk about considerations for committees. So these are just some questions, I think you have seen probably the slide deck before tonight. So if board members are on an advisory committee, are they board, are they actually voting members or ex officio? So I have worked with school boards that said, I didn't really realize that I shouldn't be voting, but now that I know, I'm not gonna vote on anything, right? I'm gonna try to kind of just watch, listen and kind of respond when asked, but really not provide a recommendation and I'll keep my opinion for when the board acts. Um, this is another, uh, piece that comes up a lot because some committees are around for a long, long time and they may not get reviewed unless there's a new superintendent or the board change is over. So what's the purpose, the role and the parameters of each committee and each advisory? Are they clear? If they're not clear, what would you like to do about that? Um, how are recommendations filtered and reviewed and shared? If they are an advisory committee that reports up to the superintendent, are they filtered through the superintendent's office? Even if they're an advisory committee that comes up and will be eventually having recommendations flow up to the board, are they filtered first through the office of the superintendent? Because your superintendent is charged with implementing your strategic plan and the day and day old business of the district. Um, and then how is that committee work discussed at board meetings? Do you have a regular calendar if it's a board committee? Um, so, uh, you know, some districts will have a finance committee and they will work with your, uh, finance director in bringing their recommendations forward. But those committees also have pretty tight parameters. We have some school boards that we work with that for these committees or for, you know, decisions that they're making will have a guiding change document that they develop either for the committee or each year if there's a budget or something is changing with finances. And some of you are familiar with our guiding change document, others of you aren't, but we can certainly reintroduce that to you. Um, and then what are the parameters of authority between kind of full control and no control over those committees? All right, so do you wanna hands-off approach or do you wanna be really involved? So those are considerations.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I don't know if this is relevant to our topic tonight, so if it's not, we can address it later. But, um, I have a question around, can we clear, more clearly define staff involvement at the committees? Because I've been on several committees where it's been unclear what the role of staff is, like, if they should be leading the conversation um, in terms of just facilitating it or if they need to be giving ideas and, like, kind of following them. Sometimes it felt like the staff was leading us a certain direction versus letting it come from the community. And, um, kind of to Kelsey's point, I'd prefer community to really give input, um, and staff has, has different avenues to do that. So if, and if certain committees are one way or the other, that that's just clear. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's fair, it's come up in some conversation before, um, that each committee kind of seems to operate a little differently in that regard. I really, um, personally love how ECMAC at the start, it defines the role of that MAC committee, like, they talk about being advisory, not decision. Um, they do bring, in that case, in ECMAC, they bring recommendations of the people that might be put on. Whereas now DPAC's a little different because it's, like, required by law and that's meant to be truly organic. Um, and then that facilitated approach, um, the facilitative staff are not meant to provide input, but there are staff members who serve on, so, um, and we got the kind of the list of the ratios here. And I think that's something that we should be, as we kind of continue to do this work on committees. Um, we do technically approve them in the consent agenda at each annual meeting or each, um, organizing meeting. So I feel like we should continue to do that and we should, I'm sorry.
What do you, you, what does the board approve?
So when we approve committee assignments.
Oh, committee assignments, okay.
Committee assignments.
I didn't hear the assignments part.
Yeah, okay, but I think we're technically approving, we're authorizing committees at the same time.
Sure.
Okay.
So I think we may wanna take a look at that and say, is there any additional things that we want in those that we're authorizing? Like, is it designing that we want this many parents, this many community members, this many staff? And I feel like we have that on the committees, but it's, I haven't looked at that in a while.
Or even just a simple thing here of what you mentioned, operate with a charge and purpose, does every group have that?
And are they consistent and are they, are we intentionally making them different or is it sort of by default?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And oftentimes, sometimes it's really tight because the director that's charged with organizing and leading that committee is, you know, is tight about that thing and that's the way that they operate and other times it's, it's by personality rather than by structure. And so, but, so it's about, you know, what would you like to see generally consistently? You still wanna have some flexibility, obviously, for the committees because they do serve different purposes.
I have a question on the first, um, bullet point about voting, other than policy, are there any other committees right now that people are voting on? Because I know the committees I'm on, there's not like a vote, so.
So.
The tallies to, like, do consensus, our requests are voting.
Yeah, and I'm really thinking about, uh, more advisory committees where board members by law are on the committee. So are they voting members? So something like policy, that is a board committee, um, that then goes to the board. As opposed to it's an advisory committee to the district, so is it advising the superintendent? Is it advising the board? And even if a board member, again, by law, must be on that committee, you all can decide what is the role of the board member on that committee. Just because you have, you're on there doesn't mean that you can't follow good governance, though the state is trying to push you out of it with that decision, so.
So just to clarify, are there any other, other than policy, are there any other committees that we're voting on?
So is there for, like, CPAC MACs, do they just ask for advice from you as a board? Advice, okay, I get it.
Right, it's more recommendations and collaboration on ideas.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I haven't experienced that at all, I was just curious, so.
Yeah, I think what's hard too is I'm, I'm looking at some of these boards and, or some of these committees that I've done as a community member and it's like, start of the year, there's thirty people there, and then at the end of the year, there's four people, you know what I mean? So it does, it definitely becomes, the percentages have become pretty skewed by the end of the year, right?
And how frequently some of these committees meet could be part of that as well.
True, yeah.
And, uh, I mean, I know I've worked with some districts where they have committees that, you know, went virtual because of COVID, uh, like early childhood committees, and they found that they actually had more attendance when they kept it virtual. So some of them have chosen that they can be home with their kids on their lap while they're meeting, so sometimes that can be helpful too. All right, so any other questions around these considerations that I've offered for you? And then we can start kind of working through these, Dr. Hile, Dr. Best, do you have any? No questions?
Right, there you go.
All right, and so now, I mean, I have.
I was gonna say, the only other, and it's not like an advisory, but the only other voting is AMSD, like, they do.
Yeah. That's, but you're appointed by the board to the.
Right, but it's on behalf of, I mean.
Yeah.
It's your question.
Same for B day.
Right. There are some appointments that you will have.
Well, in, like, two eighty-seven.
Two eighty-seven, yep, yeah. Yeah, and you are appointed by the full board to that.
Yep.
To the organization.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So, yeah, there's, so when you all do your liaison role, sometimes it's because you have to be on an advisory committee by law. Sometimes it's who's gonna be on the policy committee and who's gonna, and some, who is gonna be appointed to some of these external organizations on which you remember. Okay, I'm not gonna go there. Um, so I had put together in your packet, if you have your packet, just on page four and five, it was a way for you to reflect, and these packets are really background information and give you more information. I don't think you need me to talk through everything with you, but it's really to give you more information. So if you look on page five, here's where.
Do you wanna hold up what it should look like? Because in our four packets, it's numbered differently.
Sorry. Looks like that. Looks like that.
So it's page 23.
Okay, on your packet, sorry.
Yeah. It says Aseo Committee Counsel Review at the top. Okay.
Sorry to confuse. So I'm offering you what I've worked through with some other boards. And there is, a couple of pages before that, I gave an example of a board where we literally on flip chart paper were working through each of their committees. And at that point, they were trying to decide, do we keep some of these committees? Do we reevaluate them? What are, what is our role on the board? Do we pull board members off some of these committees? Because they were in a very confused state about what they wanted to do. So this was the beginning of that conversation and then we revisited it. For you all, on your page 20, what page?
23, or?
23, where it says Aseo Committees Counsel Review. Alright. I have the name, I think of most of your councils or committees. And then I have some, some things for you to discuss. Is it required by law? And hopefully your administrative team can let you know that. Is it a governance or administrative committee? Because that will help with, you know, who does it flow through? Are there, is there a clear charge and parameters for the committee? Do you need to reevaluate it? And, you know, on the end there, do you keep the committee? I mean, if you were thinking about, sometimes districts have redundancy across committees too where they've decided, you know what, we're going to merge these committees. To Keith's point, sometimes you lose people and some of your community members end up being on multiple committees because they're involved. And so do you find a way to collapse some committees' roles as well? So what I'm offering to you is we can start to talk through these right now and you don't clearly have to make decisions because it's a work session. But it's what I'm offering to you and to your superintendent to say, would you like to just talk through these as a board? And I am looking to you all to decide if you'd like to do that.
Yes.
I got one yes. Yeah, I'm seeing generally.
Yeah.
Looking for, yes, Thomas.
Sure.
Walk through the committee. Kelsey, alright, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question? Is the special ed advisory committee just not one of, is it not a formal committee? Is that why we don't include it?
I expect I just left it.
I have that in my notes too.
Yeah, that should be on here.
Yeah.
Okay. I was curious about that one because we don't have a board member on it.
Add that on. Okay.
They do a fabulous job of running, by the way.
Okay.
And we don't have a legislative committee.
You don't?
No, I'm asking.
That's the last time.
One of our work sessions, we can work with you and take it off for the next year. We can discuss that if there's ads.
Yeah, and sometimes we have a committee that is defunct and a district has said, you know what, we really need to have a committee, but maybe they don't meet very frequently and part of the reason why people didn't come is because we weren't clear on what its purpose was. Okay. Alright, so Community Education Program Advisory Council. These committees are a mouthful. Is this something that's required by law? I don't believe it is.
I'm thinking it is, but I'm going to call Brian Seabees in Hall while you keep talking.
And is it a governance committee? And here's, so is it and should it be a governance or administrative committee? Those are my questions to you.
Meaning to have representation?
Is it something that reports up and through and advises primarily the management side of the organization or the school board side? What's that, Thomas?
Are you asking us?
I'm asking you all, yep.
Admin.
Admin. Alright, and as far as you understand, are there clear, is there a clear charge and parameters for this council?
I don't know. I've not served on this.
Yeah, and it's okay if you don't know.
Who's that asking, but I'm pretty sure it is because you have to have a certain, certain community member.
Yeah, I think your special ed.
I think it's legal, yeah.
Your community ed.
Correct.
Are both required. But you know what, we will work with your administrative team to answer this column specifically. Tonight is getting started on this and then you can revisit it, if that's my suggestion.
Yeah, from my experience on the committee, I do feel like there are clear parameters.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it's a balance of parents, community, staff. There's a good, there's a good balance in that committee, so.
Okay.
I would say yes, but that's just one person.
Sarah says so.
Says Sarah, yeah.
And it's okay to say you don't know. Do you have a sense that you would need to reevaluate this committee? For council?
I just had to tell me, say no.
Agree.
Brian, agree?
Yeah, no, no need to reevaluate that one. So your District 279 Foundation, I know that's not required by law, but many school districts have it. And it is separate. Usually these foundations are a separate nonprofit with a separate role, but they have a connection. I know it's on your list. Do you have board members who are liaisons or members on there?
Yeah, and they're liaison only because it's the board of trustees, so we don't vote.
Okay. So liaison only board members. And it's neither a governance nor administrative committee. And in terms of the charge and parameters, it's really, you don't have oversight of it. So I'm just. How about your DPAC, your District Planning Advisory Council?
Required by law.
Yep.
Easy answer.
And so is it a governance or administrative committee?
Well, kind of is both. Yeah, I mean, it's one of the committees that give a recommendation to the boards. I'd consider it a governance, but I think we previously had some discussion on, I think they all. It's been unclear as to if they're truly reporting to the board or reporting to management but presenting to the board. But for now, maybe we just work with, if they present to the board, it's governance. For now.
Typically, the content is like management type stuff, like how.
And do they present to Aseo School Board?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
But technically, any of the committees could report to the board. So I guess maybe I'm meaning admin. They are providing recommendations to the board, but I don't know if that necessarily means that it's a.
Well, I wonder if that's, and I don't know what legally they're required to do, but if that's something to clarify, like what, what direction do we want DPAC to go? Do we want you to, are there specific topics to look at? Like we do student services as one of them or how they're doing middle schools type stuff, which that's all function over form.
We have talked about, should we, should certain things get input from DPAC? I think the cell phone policy might have been one. But I think the nature of it by law is that it's supposed to be their opportunities.
Yes, exactly.
But it's not to say we couldn't leverage them to provide input.
Yeah, the recommendations have implications for administration, right? And you all would, would support or have discussion around it? And maybe ask about any of those things, if there are things that you think, okay, this might need to elevate in prioritization for operational planning? But to your point, Thomas, about it feeling more admin, I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
I never felt like I was volunteering on behalf of the board when serving on DPAC.
Well, I think that's a yes and that's, but that might be a different question as to the role of the board members.
No, I'm going to go as a DPAC member.
Oh, as a member, oh, before you, okay.
Yeah.
Brian Seabees in Hall said, yes, it's a state statute.
Yep, that's right. For Community Education Council.
Okay.
In terms of DPAC, are there, is there a clear charge and parameters as far as you know from your time there, Thomas?
I'd say so.
I wasn't on it. Yeah, I wasn't on it at the beginning of the year. It seems to have, it's more focused this year, which I really appreciate, how they facilitated it. It seems like there's more buy-in to the final recommendations they're headed towards, which I appreciate.
That's good feedback for our director.
Yeah, yeah, she's doing a great job.
I do think that, yeah, it's clear. Like when I've served on it, I feel like the facilitators are communicating exactly what the role is and what they're seeking to do. It does lead me to the question, like we've got like our little blurbs of each committee. So what is the board technically approving in those definitions versus how they're run? We just, that may be an opportunity to tighten up so we're all, it's all hanging together.
That's cool, yeah. Just writing some of these things down, okay. So kind of the descriptions and, right. So it doesn't sound like you need to reevaluate DPAC at this point. Alright, and it sounds like you're all saying, yes, you should keep it.
I think we have to.
Legally required.
It's right, it's right here.
That's right.
I just read it.
You don't need to reevaluate how it's, how it's operating here, how about that? How about your Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee? These are long names. Yeah, I don't believe that's required by law.
I feel like it's, oh, sorry.
Governance or administration?
Admin.
Admin. Yeah, it usually would be. Clear charge and parameters, now I'm going to look to the people on my left. No need to reevaluate. And keep, yes.
It's tight.
Got it. Your Financial Involvement School Community Accountability Liaison's Advisory.
This amount.
That's trying to get to fiscal pretty hard. That's really trying to get to that acronym. Tell me what you know about this one. I don't, I don't know if that's required by law. I don't think so. Again, you can get that, you know, they get it tonight. And is it an administrative or governance committee?
Yeah, would this, I'm sorry, I don't know, would this be our finance committee?
Yes. There's no other finance, okay, sometimes. Admin?
That one's a good balance of parents, community members, staff.
Yeah, it's a good turnout.
Do you have board members on that committee?
I'm on that one, yeah.
Okay, and you don't vote, you generally don't give suggestions, okay. Clear charge and parameters for that advisory?
Yes, I would say so.
Got it? So no need to reevaluate and by law, of course, you're going to keep it. Alright, your RISE Committee. Radically investing in scholars' excellence.
Yeah, so this is not required by law. This came as one of the action items for the George Floyd and systemic racism resolution. So that, similar to the LGBTQI plus Advisory Committee, are advisory, right? So they're providing recommendations to the cabinet for consideration around the action items outlined in the resolutions.
So it's an administrative advisory.
So can I ask a question, just because I haven't been involved with two of those committees there? But DPAC, we typically present at the end of the year. Is that a pattern that those committees follow as well if they're providing recommendations? Or any that provide recommendations?
So the advisory committee has, RISE has in the past, and then most recently has not.
Like in a board presentation?
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So.
Also, RISE, the intent was also for it to be really a two-way conversation though with the board too, because we wanted, originally the intent was that RISE, the families or caregivers that were part of that would also give feedback for things that were happening at the board level. And I don't know how, I mean, I haven't been as involved, but that was kind of the hope was that, you know, we weren't, it would be another voice to, into our decision-making.
And that's where your board report would come into play, right? Where we would hear about it then?
Yeah, I would say it's structured very differently than DPAC. I would say even more informal.
Okay.
And it really is an opportunity for them to build relationships with staff, learn more about the district. Creates, you know, that ability for a two-way communication. It's our most diverse committee, you know, for that reason. So, yeah, I.
It was really a way to engage our families in a different, in a different way besides like an ECMAC, a DPAC, you know, it's just another avenue for more engagement.
Would you say that there's a clear charge and parameters for the committee? It sounds like it maybe has evolved.
Well, the clear charge is engagement. It's not a working, like not necessarily developing recommendations when less necessary. It really is that sort of communication and dialogue with staff.
So that could be the charge, right? It's the communication.
There have been, there have been recommendations from RISE that led to us updating the harm reporting protocol and the survey scale for belonging for family stakeholders and inclusion. So there was some, some early work in the early, in the first couple of years that had some specific things that they wanted to get, to give input on that, that.
Because we let that group kind of just, you know, like write like what's happening at the board at that time. It was the harm, so it was like, they really took that on.
Yep.
So even like last year, I think one of the questions, they wanted to know more about recruitment and retention. So we had HR jump on and share more about recruitment and retention.
Yeah, the LGBTQI plus Advisory Committee with a, with a resolution that was providing accountability to a recent policy in the 508, gender inclusion, those items were new items to our system, right? That we hadn't implemented previously, right? Or been directed to implement previously. So the advisory committee providing perspective and giving input to the cabinet, to the superintendent on, here's what we would recommend to implement this, and then the cabinet saying, okay, right? Like, okay to some of those and some of those, eh, maybe not. And so there's, there was this two-way, has been a two-way communication around those, those recommendations. But they come as recommendations, they don't come as.
Well, and that's the question about how they come to the board. Because if it's a board committee, are they being presented to the board or is it?
Yeah, they're not coming to the board, they're coming to the cabinet.
Administrative committee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I have a question because how, how do we align when it comes to staff and community members or parents and students on these boards and making sure community is being heard? And I believe staff has a separate advisory committee for LGBTQ, is that correct?
There's a staff affinity group.
Right, yeah, okay. So I'm just curious, because that's a pretty large number compared to the other two. And then along with, what was that? So I just have a question about that and like how do we, how do we better align? Or are we, is there enough information about RISE out there that we're getting people to attend or?
So I'm wondering with that, that's a great question, Erica. I'm wondering with, and I don't know, so it's an ask, that it sounds like if it's an engagement and it's more people coming together to engage and talk than to be this formal committee where we only have six community members, and am I interpreting that maybe correctly?
Yep.
Where, I don't know if RISE says we can only have these many community members, these many staff, these many.
No, and I think that would be completely unnecessary.
It's engagement.
Nor I think it's unrealistic, given.
Oh, I'm not saying a limit. I mean, can we better balance some of these committees?
I think if we're talking about balancing, we're getting into a conversation about limiting participation. I don't know how we have the conversation without talking about.
I think it's more limiting staff because they, they have avenues for input. And if these are truly community engagement, and this may not be a community engagement committee, maybe it is truly staff and community, but that's the question is like, is that defined and who's joining the committee?
But also, we don't know, like sometime, I mean, maybe people are identifying as staff, but they're also parents or community members and they just.
Yeah, that's delineated in some spots too.
Yeah, it's delineated here. We were asked for that, I asked for that, so it's here.
I mean, I also, I guess I'm a little leery about moving toward a system where we're outside of the board excluding people from having a voice. Particularly when we have these committees or these bodies that were created for that exact reason, to give staff and the community a voice. So, yeah, I mean, I'm not seeing the current issue.
Well, like DPAC was the same way and it felt really uncomfortable as a community member to give feedback because it was like you were talking to the person that was in charge of it and you're like trying to give critical feedback. And it's hard to take that sometimes when you're the person. And so I think it's not even just these two committees. It's as we approach any of these committees, how do we have staff representing? how do we have staff representation that's leading the conversation and what their role is? And maybe that's more what I'm getting at, is what's the role of those staff members on the committee? And making sure that community members are really truly being prioritized in these conversations, depending on the committee, and maybe that's not relevant for all the committees.
So I just want to clarify, so when you say community members, you also mean parents? Okay.
Non-staff.
Yeah, we delineate it, because, um, I know, like, DPAC has legislative specificity, so it's helpful to see.
And CPAC, too.
When we get recommendations, I want to know who the recommendations are coming from. Are they coming from community members, are they coming from parents? I think it matters, I think it does matter whose weight is in the committee and who it represents. We've been saying that we want to ensure that everybody's voice is heard, but if we only have two community members, then the community's voice, member's voice wasn't heard, the other voices were heard. So I think it helps us to interpret and understand who is the voice.
I mean, that's not necessarily true, that would be an assumption.
But if you're two people on a committee...
But I'm not saying that we shouldn't strive to have more parent or community, or even student voices on these committees.
Yes, I agree, especially students.
And then, I do also think it is important that we delineate between, to Director Foster's point, delineate between, like, staff liaisons and then staff that are participating as stakeholders in our district.
Totally.
And those lines got blurry sometimes on the committees, I think, yeah.
Um, I think if they're creating a space that it doesn't feel safe for community members to, um, participate, I think that's a culture of conversation.
Well, like, AIPAC won't always want a board member there.
Oh, no.
You know, and they'll say, you know, Ethan, I, when, when, when do you want me to show up, right? Like, that is like the conversation.
It's just something to rethink and evaluate.
So I guess I never, so I think that whatever's on our committee, the committee list that we approve in the consent agenda should have all the committees that have been, are providing recommendations, or have a board member assigned to it, because they're not consistent. And when they're not consistent, we can't see, like, what is the purpose of it. So, for example, LGBTQ committee was not on our list, and so, do I understand the purpose of it? It's not, is it documented somewhere? Did we authorize that purpose? Or did it get created, and we don't, we don't know the purpose anymore? So I just think they should be consistent, um, and they should be in our board packet at the organization meeting if we have a board member assigned to it. So, all the district ones, like, that's management, and if we're not on it, like, that's, that's your, your mechanisms.
And I heard you say the RISE and the LGBTQIA are both administrative committees. And so, in terms of charge and parameters, I'm not saying that'll have to be, you know, this is exactly, if the charge is they are there to provide two-way communication, I mean, I, I think that's part of what the parameters and the charge are, is they're there to hear and provide advice to the administration.
As outlined in the resolutions.
Okay.
That's where the purpose and charge.
Yeah, so we can take it right from there and put it on our papers, our sheets.
So, I'm hearing, keep the committees?
We have to, they're by resolution, they don't change the oath.
They're by your law. Right? Okay, your policy. Uh, American Indian Parent Advisory is required by law.
Oh, yes, yes. We're not going there.
Is that a governance or administrative committee?
Admin.
Admin?
They have, they do the concurrents.
Yeah, so it's both?
It's kind of both.
Okay.
It's odd, but it's both.
Yeah, it's an unusual...
Yes.
Okay. Do they have clear charge and parameters?
I believe they do by state, you know.
By statute?
Uh-huh, by statute.
Any need to reevaluate anything about, um, AIPAC? As it relates to how they interact with the district, the board, provide recommendations?
We do, we go through their tribal consultation, if we do it.
Okay. No choice on whether, okay. Uh, Safety and Emergency Management Advisory Committee. I don't, that's not required by law, is it?
No, it's something that, uh, that's done here, where we get input in regards to our safety and emergency management that we have here, so we have, um, people from...
Some districts have had grants in the past where they have to have one.
Yeah, no, where we have, like, police officers and people from different areas, as long as, and it's why there's so many staff, is because you have the majority of your principals sitting on it, and APs sitting in on it, so...
And that's an administrative committee?
Yeah.
Clear charge and parameters?
Yeah.
Yes?
So this doesn't have a board liaison, so, um, I mean, is it on our list because it's got community members?
Yeah, that's why we added it, uh, we didn't know for sure which one it was, so...
Yeah, and, and going through this list, sometimes it's helpful, whether you have a board liaison or not, to understand what all the committees are doing. Policy Committee is a governance committee, right? Uh, so, uh, and so it's, you have a property committee, correct?
In case we need it, yes.
In case you need it, okay. Why do I have the foundation on there twice? Don't know. Any changes that you see need to be made with Policy Committee?
The CE, um, CEAC or Special Education Advisory Committee?
Yep.
Yeah.
Did we add that on there, sorry?
Yeah, sorry, hand wrote that in in the bottom. I was just going back up to Policy Committee, is, uh, is it working as you would like it to?
Yes.
Yes? Yes, okay. So no need to reevaluate, sometimes, even how it functions, since we had our discussion earlier about structure and flow. All right, and the Property Committee is...
Just when it's needed.
Meets when needed, okay. Uh, so the Special Education Advisory Committee, right, is required by law?
I would, yes.
Yeah, as I recall, it is. Is that a governance or administrative committee, in terms of how it functions?
Yeah, admin.
Yeah.
Admin?
When I said it on it, it seemed to be admin slash, um, like, uh, like, not a parenting group, but just like an affiliation group, where they, not, shared stories and learned how to create access for their students, and it was...
And like engagement as well?
Yeah, engagement, thank you.
Okay.
So that gets to the, is there a clear charge and are there clear parameters? And I'm seeing, Dr. Bass say, yes. Any need to reevaluate this committee, how it functions here?
So nobody, do no board members serve on special one?
No, I would actually say, maybe we should look at this one for reevaluation in terms of just, um, are we helping them enough in their capacity and their role as a committee? And then what else can we do to support them? And what, do we need to do some sort of liaison with them? So that we can understand the priorities coming out of that committee better? Or get a recommendation presentation from them? Something like that?
Would it, would it help just to have them come, someone come from the, uh, to a work session and present?
Well, no, I know, I know, lines, and it almost seems like the LGBTQIA Advisory Committee and RISE have the, have the same kind of support to say, I mean, I know they have board liaisons, but maybe they also come to the board meeting, or they're, to see if there is more support in those committees that they want? Like a check-in, just like the special.
I think consistency is always a good thing, so if we've defined a committee for a role, whatever that role is, should be, they should be consistently treated, so, um, yeah. So if we, if we say that they, that we want RISE to, I, and we can choose, maybe it's a work session or it's coming with recommendations, I think that's open for options. But I think it's, I think consistency is important, everyone has the same opportunity, whether it is to provide recommendations to the board or to come to a work session, whatever we decide now.
So one of the things that I'm gonna look to Dr. Heil for is perhaps she with cabinet can kind of have a check-in with all the committees? And see where they are sitting in terms of, do they feel they have a clear charge and parameters in their role?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, yeah, that's...
I don't think you need to make decisions here, 'cause it's a work session, about exactly what's gonna happen. I think we can tighten this, you know, complete the table, and then have you come back with maybe some recommendations from the administrative team on what to do moving forward, if you're open to that. And then, if you need to have further discussion.
No, because I think what Erica, those are good questions, and I think that you could apply them to some of the more, like, more of the engagement role committees.
Yeah, and mine is more coming out of the reevaluate, because I do think that there's a big need there, just in, in attention from us.
Yeah, and that's a good point, like, the perception too, like, um, you know, do, if people are meeting, we do get the question, like, does the board know, like, this is what we're talking about, this is what our concerns are? So if there's a board member liaison, we get our board reports, and we're more informed in other committees that don't have that, don't have that access, so to speak. So I think we just, again, back to like clarity, both for those participating, for, for the leadership and for us, I think is, is a good thing with this exercise. So that doesn't mean that everybody comes to the board and everybody has liaison, but I think it goes back to that consistency and clarity.
Because I would need help with, so one of the things, when I came in to OCEO, I was unclear on the direction that was coming from a committee or an advisory or whatever, so it kind of confused me, because you're my bosses, it kind of confused me, am I getting direction here, am I getting direction there? Kind of who's on first, so I just think to make sure I understand, if it's a recommendation, or is, you know, is it a recommendation, is it something like, DPAC, I think, you know, they have to present, and, you know, we have to, like, yeah. So, yeah, the clarity will help, yeah.
Maybe there's some committees who, they like, don't want to present to the board every year, and may not need to. So, um, maybe that's a sense check with some of them.
Sure.
But I think, like, we talked about before, like, we want to engage our community, we want to make sure that, uh, we're not just engaging, I mean, we, there's like a kind of an end game too, like, where is, where is it going? You know, just so, yeah.
Not wasting people's time.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and clarifying the charge, the parameters, and their role is helpful for them, and then there isn't the confusion, like, when your superintendent is coming in. Because sometimes people think, I'm on this committee, it's a district committee flowing through the administration, and therefore, my recommendations are going to be implemented, right? That's kind of human nature.
Right.
And so, if there are clear parameters and clear roles, that this is an advisory committee, and when you're on this committee, you're providing, maybe not even recommendations, right? You're providing input or feedback with a district lens, right? Because if you're an advisory committee, you're also, remember the education leadership system, you're, you're being asked to kind of think above the line from the, what does the district need?
Well, it's also an opportunity to have ambassadors for what we're doing, you know, and so they can say, like, hey, this is what's going on, and, you know, I was part of this, or I knew about this, and, you know, so we can...
They're, and they're a pipeline to...
Yes, they are.
All of you sitting up here as well, right? You generally want them to be involved on committees and understand some of these things before they, uh, before they get on the board. So we have a sense of these committees, do you want to, um, it sounds like most of these have clear parameters, but you might want to tighten up, uh, some of the descriptions for some of these? Um, do you have any desire to create kind of a guiding change document that would start maybe with the administrative team around committees, generally speaking? Where you have clarity around, they're a governance committee or they're an administrative committee, that we want to be clear on, you know, their charge and what they do, whether it's around engagement, whether it's around providing recommendations?
I have, we, because we have something like that, I think we should take it to that next step, or at least refine it, so that is clear, because we already have a document that says some of this, that maybe has some gaps. So maybe start with that document and refine it so that is clear.
Yeah, clarity would be good.
My only comment was gonna just be around timing, knowing there's so much on the plate right now. Is this something we could do in the summer and have more time to concentrate on it? When boundary changes are over and some of those bigger issues are off the plate.
I think, uh, when we're looking at making any changes to committee charges, we should be consulting those committees.
Yeah.
So I think that's another sort of time.
Well, maybe something we could do as board, and...
Bless you.
I mean, I just, I think there should be a formal process, so I don't know if us individually doing that is formal enough, but I, I wouldn't feel comfortable making those changes without consulting with each of the committees?
Right.
And giving them a voice.
Yeah, no, it's about, yeah, for sure. I was just trying to say, like, you know, there's a lot on irritant, so...
But you were volunteering.
You're being voluntold, Thomas, you're being voluntold.
So...
Yeah, it's, it shouldn't be that difficult, uh, when these committees meet to pull their charge and purposes.
The only thing I'd like to consider is a legislative committee, because I don't always feel comfortable coming up with a platform without community, I mean, there's so many things that happen in the legislature. There's so many opportunities to engage our community, whether it's on behalf of the district for hearing or anything like that, and so, um, I'm just, I mean, we don't talk about now, but I, I, I mean, I, I'm a huge advocate to have that, and I've seen it modeled in other districts, and I just think it's a, another, you know, when you talk about transparency way, I mean, that's a huge piece of what we do, is advocate at the legislature.
And this is, this is the start of your, your conversation on committees and kind of...
But we've had it before, so I meant just kind of saying like that.
Maybe revisit, resurrecting it?
Yes.
But, yeah, at some point, we'll have to say, what committees do we want to add or have interest in? Like, I'm very interested in adding that curriculum, maybe you can just get that out now, like, do we have additional interests? So we've kind of validated, say, we need all the ones we have. Not that we want to add a whole bunch more, but right now, are there any interest areas where we have seen other districts have a particular committee? And that way, we can bring it back into the right mechanism to approve done later?
So I heard legislative...
Curriculum?
You, do, you have a curriculum review process, though, right?
Oh, gosh, yes.
And that's generally something that would flow through the administration?
Yeah, or if we make changes to how we approve curriculum, it's just, that's one of the main questions that I get a lot of, um, one, I see that at other districts, and when we think about board reports and things that are being done, like, curriculum, the fact that, like, we're trying to make progress is so significant, and we have it in our strategic plan, I feel like that there is an opportunity there. I don't, I don't have it fleshed out, I don't exactly know what's going to be there.
Okay.
I, I kind of like the technology too, just having said on that, but Anthony and folks last year, they were talking, you know, lots, it was actually a really active group as far as parents having opinions about AI and the use of AI for their students and things like that, I think it's really kind of, yeah, really...
Does he adding a liaison?
Uh, I think so, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, they're having some cool conversations there, for sure. At least, you know, the, it was, it was weird, it was a very engaged group, like Anthony came to...
It was weird.
Like a good weird, or a fucking bad weird?
But it was, uh, it was, uh, you know, I mean, I think, he came and talked to DPAC for a little bit, I think, like, ten DPAC folks just immediately joined up with that technology group, you know, so...
Are there any other interest areas? I think there's, you probably have a lot of engagement opportunities that are not necessarily committee, but I think, like, climate, all the climate work that we're trying to do, and student experience, and I think a lot, there's elements under our strategic priorities that we could probably use some engagement in.
And maybe we could do that through our, like, have topics and listening sessions, or like, you know, and, like, focus on it.
That's a good idea.
All right. I will take this information, I will circle back with your administrative team and we'll get the report to you.
We didn't discuss the role of board members so much.
You're right, we didn't. Do you want to continue that tonight, or do you want to revisit that?
Well, we might feel just get some head nods, maybe, instead of, and if we're not on the same page, then we can table it another time. So, um, I guess my, my thought on this is that we're there, we're not there to influence, like, we're there to just, to have awareness, to understand, bring back our board reports. Or, um, I think from time to time, like, if they're, so, let's say DPAC, for example, like, they're, um, they're discussing a topic, we can say, well, you know, we already looked at that two years ago, and this is kind of what happened at that time, that might inform, um, kind of how you position this, or how you'll get it now. So I feel like our role should, should not be actively, like, we shouldn't be active in it, we're swaying or influencing, we should be listening, bringing back, having awareness, and where appropriate, reflecting kind of what board action is going to be taking place in the past.
More collaborative than, and influencing, you know, kind of?
Like, I just, like, I try not to even participate in discussions, honestly, because it's not my place in my life. But I, I think we just need to...
Yeah, ask clarifying questions and things like that, yeah.
But do you feel like the people that also sort of know that about, like, that's one thing I think that...
I did not know that when I was on committees, I'm like, why isn't that board member talking?
Yeah, like, we have a board member, thank you. So that might be a good clarification.
Clarification of roles.
The board members are there as a liaison primarily, just to listen and provide information about the governance role or, or information that has come up at the board table.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, that, as choice makers, it's, it's probably better if you don't participate in developing recommendations and participating and providing your opinions at that table, that you'll save it for when you're at the board table.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of head nods. There you go, that was handled.
Finish that fast.
Um, I have one more thing before you officially close out your meeting, and that is, as you think about your work session tonight, including the, uh, the conversation you had before you did your postcards, what was one thing you liked using your post-it, something that you wish either for the future or would have happened differently, and something that you're going to commit to doing as you move forward? And you can put it on this other foot chart over here, and then I am done with my part of the meeting.
Then I'll have one quick ask, and then we'll be out.
Do it three separate, oh, yeah, okay.
Three separate posts.
Oh. I'll just need these back, because you need to have the same color pen when you do this activity.
Then the snowstorm comes.
Oh, and I'm definitely going to keep my distance.
Serious.
All right, uh, you want to...
Yep, I just have, um... I just want to ask the board for one thing, so our next scheduled work session is April 8th, and Sarah, I know you've already told us that you couldn't be there, and one of the things we did have on there was monitoring report for Vision Card C and D, but we're going to move that to May because we're going to be finishing off our vision cards, so we will be doing that in May. So the only other item on that day is attendance boundaries, okay? So April 15th, we have a PD scheduled, and with that PD, this schedule there, we're going to go into that whole communication process, right? What should be communicated out, what should be not communicated in, so it's to have that discussion. Superintendent School Board Relations and just review and process for the superintendent goals. So what we could do, if anyone agrees, is for not to have a meeting on April 8th, and then do it all on April 15th, and we could move that policy meeting from the 8th to the 15th as well.
No, we had one, that's right, we added one.
Yeah.
That would be great.
So taking away one meeting?
Yeah. Okay. No! Vice Chair Brooks, thank you.
Oh, you'll see it in the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to share anything of tonight?
Yeah, anybody want to share?
Yeah, you can certainly share if you like, this is, even in big groups, when you do this, you, it's just, it's like a exit ticket.
Ah, got it. So I will share, since I...
Go ahead.
You brought it up.
Well, so I think, you know, elements of tonight could have been professional development, but I think having it in the work session environment and having the opportunity to have transparency about how we work together, how we have some of these processes, and just putting it all into one, I think was really good. I think, two, we've had in the past, and this is a different board, but we've had times where we've had a just difficult topic and frustration, and we could not come back together to have productive discourse for the remainder of the meeting, so I just would like to, um, celebrate that and to say thank you to everybody for engaging in the next topics in this really productive way.
And just to add to that, I think, Dr. Heil, I just want to say, like, I really appreciate in preparation for the work session, you were really clear with what the questions were, we were being asked, so I think that helps get, keep us kind of focused on, so where it's not like all over the place, and so I thought that was, like, very helpful.
Thank you. And I liked, I like a lot, because I like focus and alignment, so I like hearing what's working, what's not working, so we can tighten everything, because the worst thing you could do is sit somewhere that you don't feel that's working, so I really appreciate it, understanding the wants that we want here, so.
Are the meetings adjourned at 3:36?
I feel better.